Good evening. I am Mayor Donald T. Lopez, Village of Los Franchos de Albuquerque. Welcome to our Board of Trustees regular meeting. It's the 22nd of July 2020. This meeting is streamed via Zoom and Facebook. It is exactly 7:00 PM. To remain in compliance with the State of New Mexico's Public Health Order dated July 13th, 2020, the Village of Los Franchos de Albuquerque is live streaming this meeting on its Facebook page through Zoom video conferencing, and participants can join telephonically. The instructions on how to participate in this meeting have been posted on the Village website. I will now call the role trustee Pablo Rayel. Here trustee Alan Lewis.
Here.
Trustee Sandra Pacheco.
Here.
Trustee Tom Ricabini.
Here.
I'm now going to move to item three of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Approve of the agenda?
I need a second.
I second. I don't know if you got that. Oh, see, I moved approval of the agenda.
And we have a second from trustee Alan Lewis. I'm going to call for the question. I'm now going to call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
At this point, we are at public comment period. Participants may address the Board of Trustees to comment on issues, problems, or successes on topics that do not appear elsewhere on the agenda. Participants will also be given an opportunity to comment on agenda items for the open session as they come up. Submitted written comments that were sent to the village clerk prior to the meeting will now be read. I will ask Danielle Sio Molina, the village clerk, to follow up now.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. I am reading this on behalf of Christian Reedy. Good evening and best wishes, Mayor and trustees. My name is Christian Reedy, 8642 Rio Grande Boulevard, Los Franchos, New Mexico. Born and raised in the North Valley, I attended Los Franchos Elementary, Taft Junior High, and then on to Valley High. So I have a lifelong familiarity with Los Franchos area, and for the last 23 years, I have been blessed to live here in the village. We currently have three generations of the Reedy family residing here in the village. Our concern tonight is the ongoing discussion of whether to allow short-term rental of guest houses and other structures through the online programs of Airbnb and VRBO. Our opposition is that these are commercial companies wishing to install small commercial franchises throughout our residential neighborhoods. After some research, it is very clear that many communities have grappled with the adverse effects and impacts such as rental operations such rental operations have created. It appears the regulation, licensing, safety, inspection, and law enforcement burdens all become the responsibility of the local governing bodies and their local resources. We feel this will thrust tremendous additional responsibilities on village staff members, ultimately resulting in diminished services to its residents or additional costs to local residents. Another concern is that these offerings will pull much-needed businesses away from the established lodging providers currently doing business in and around the village area. Perhaps a study should be done on whether a need for additional lodging in this area even exists. Additionally, current village ordinances have been in place for many years that specifically prohibit these rentals. What legal and moral obligations does the village owe residents who have previously acted upon this specific language and such guarantees? In closing, I would express on behalf of our entire family, we love living in the village. We have a long tradition with deep roots in this area. We fear random rentals will adversely disturb the tranquility of our neighborhoods. Our desire is for the village to maintain its current ordinances, which have provided for all residents the finest of living conditions and completely avoid the slippery slope and Pandora's box that await us all by allowing for the rental and selling out of our beautiful village. Sincerely, Christian Reedy. The second public comment. I am reading on behalf of Henry Shonard, 6603 Elwood Drive Northwest. Mayor and trustees, on Saturday, the reactivation of the Greenwood's Neighborhood Association, GWNA, was celebrated with a safe evening stroll. Our neighborhood consists of about 70 properties on Elwood Drive, Edgewood Drive, and a short piece of Green Valley that connects them. Our southern border is Osuna between Second and Fourth Streets. Historically, the Greenwood's Neighborhood is part of Zia Gardens and became part of Los Franchos when it was incorporated into the village at the beginning of the millennium. Many of the GWNA evening strollers were old timers. One family living in a house that dates back to 1940. A pleasant surprise for us old timers were the slew of youngsters. The stroll was safe, fun, and inspiring. We look forward to more safe get-togethers. Of course, we do not know what the future holds, but we plan to be a stronger community as we come out of social distancing. We are optimistic about the future. The new Los Franchos Village Center at Fourth and Osuna is part of the future. One of the main reasons GWNA reactivated was because of this new village center. We hope to be included in the process of realizing the village center development through meetings with Los Franchos and Palindrom representatives. We respectfully request the board let us know about plans for community involvement in the Fourth and Osuna project. Thank you to the mayor and all the trustees for your consideration. Those are the two written comments tonight, Mayor and trustees. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. We have two additional gentlemen who want to speak. Participants wishing to speak that registered with the clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting will be provided an opportunity to speak within the allotted three-minute time limit. I want to remind the speakers to identify themselves for the record. Please state your name and address. Is Mr. James W. Ross available?
Mr. Ross, if you are available, if you could raise your hand.
Yes, this is James. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Right, thank you, Mayor. My name is James Ross. I live at 8913 Ortega Court, which is the northwest corner of Fourth and Ortega Streets. Ortega Road, excuse me. And I'm also the president of our homeowners association, which is Ortega Court Homeowners Association. It's 13 homes on that northwest corner. I want to start by saying thank you, Mayor Lopez and trustee Lewis, for acknowledging emails that I sent to the whole group. Unfortunately, I did not hear from trustees Rayel, Pacheco, or Ricabini. I've got concerns that I'm voicing on behalf of our homeowners association as well as local residents related to the intersection at Fourth and Ortega. There's been a lot of development there, and this board has actually approved, I believe, the development that's currently being constructed at the southeast corner of the same intersection. Additionally, there was a very violent accident that happened about six months ago in which a good friend of mine's mother was badly injured after a driver was drunk and high and driving at an excessive rate of speed, which is unfortunately not too uncommon. In prior years, we've had people go through our fence, end up in people's backyards with their cars. This is not a new issue for our association either. We have talked to the security head multiple occasions, to which he expressed to me that Ortega, I'm sorry, Fourth Street is in fact a four-lane highway. I don't share that view. It is a residential road that unfortunately is being used far too much for commuters to the west side and to Rio Rancho. Again, there is lots of concerns locally that the stretch of road between Paseo and Alameda on Fourth Street has no physical barriers to impede traffic. If you go out there, and I would really recommend you do, you'll see people at any hour of the day are traveling 50, 60, 70 miles per hour just on that straight road. I also realize it intersects between Bernalillo County and the village. However, we are all village residents and taxpayers, and I really would consider, I really hope the board would consider before there's any more plans for development, such as the event, the item on the agenda today, that you all would consider the safety updates that are necessary for that intersection. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, James. Mr. Joe Craig, are you available? State your name and address.
Mr. Craig, if you could raise your hand if you're on.
I'll try again. I don't see him specifically now. I see two brief phone numbers on, but I don't know if they relate to him, and I don't have that information. And so I could unmute those callers, but if it's not him.
Well, you might unmute them and ask if one of them is Joe Craig, just to be safe.
Hi, this is David. David Montoya.
David, you may speak because I'm going, I'm going to go ahead. Are you wanting to speak on something that's already on the agenda? If so, you'll have to wait until item comes up.
Yeah, they just, somebody unmuted me. I didn't, they said they were going to unmute me at a proper time.
Yeah, you're going to have to wait, David. Sorry about that. So apparently.
No, no problem.
Okay, thank you, David. Apparently Joe Craig is not.
Let me try one, two more numbers.
Go right ahead.
Is this Joe Craig?
Kiko, this is Maria Rinaldi.
Is this Joe Craig?
Okay, I'm going to move on, Kiko. I need to ask if, is there anyone else who wishes to speak that did not register prior to the meeting? If so, please state your name and address. You have three minutes.
If you would like to speak, please raise your hand.
We don't have anybody. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to item five, which is presentations. There are none. Item six is the consent agenda. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Item A, the minutes of the May 28th, 2020 regular working session. I'm sorry, it's a working session. Item B are the minutes of the June 10th, 2020 regular meeting. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
I need a second.
I'll second Sandra Pacheco.
Is there any discussion or amendment to either of these minutes? Being done, I'm going to call for the question. I'm going to call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Thank you. We're now going to move to item seven, departmental reports. The departmental reports are included in the packet and reflect activities for the period listed in the individual reports. Does the governing body have any questions regarding the reports?
Mayor?
Yes.
I do.
Thank you, trustee Pacheco.
This is the mayor's report, and in it, you mentioned the second item is about VCSO providing additional coverage for the ditch banks, trails, and roads in the village using bikes, dirt bikes, and ATV. providing additional coverage for the ditch banks, trails, and roads in the village using bikes, dirt bikes, and ATVs. I'm just curious, did something prompt them to provide additional coverage, or was this just in discussion?
I think what happened is BCSO had two deputies that were working in the South Valley, and these two deputies were told, perhaps instructed, by either the BCSO sheriff or the North Valley Command Center to come to the North Valley and perform similar duties. And so Sheriff Deputy Daniel Mauricio and another sheriff deputy, and I don't have his name with me at this moment, they met with me here at Village Hall two weeks ago and said they were going to be providing this additional coverage along ditch banks, trails, and roads using bikes, dirt bikes, and ATVs. And I have their telephone numbers, which I could share with anybody, and I'll be contacting them several times a month to see how things are going. So to me, it's just an additional coverage that has been offered to the village, and why would we not allow that? It's not costing us anything. I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you, mayor. I was just curious.
Could I make a comment on that?
Sure, trustee Rayel.
I believe, I don't know, a couple or three, Mayor Abraham was still here. We bought some ATVs and bicycles for them to do this.
That's right.
We bought some ATVs and bicycles for the BCSO to do this kind of monitoring. And so I think it must be just to follow up on that.
It has to be.
Because I know it was approved a long time ago.
And we bought an ATV a year ago, a really nice one, and so it was out here. And there was a picture of it in the Village Vision last year. So they finally realized, I guess, that it was time to utilize this equipment here in the village.
Mayor?
Yes, trustee Ricabini.
Yes, thank you very much. I think it's really a good and welcome, welcome thing.
Absolutely.
We noticed in Fred's report, larceny just seems to be way out right now.
Yes.
I'd like the additional patrols and, 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 especially along the ditch banks.
I agree. I completely agree. Any other questions on the departmental reports? Okay, thank you.
I have, I have a question.
Go right ahead, trustee Lewis.
For Administrator Simon. In her report, she says, it sounds like we basically are finished, or have we not finished the punch list for Fourth Street? And wrapped up Fourth Street and site southwest.
Administrator Simon, would you like to comment on that? Are you available to speak?
Thank you, mayor and trustee Lewis. We are still walking through Fourth Street. I would say we're about ninety-nine percent finished, but there's a couple of things. We still don't have street signs, as you might have noticed. There is one issue of a clear sight triangle that we have to fix, and a couple punch list items that we found when we, when we walked it with some DOT consultants last week. So just a few final wrap-up items, but it's looking really good, and we don't anticipate a lot of further expense.
Thank you.
Any further questions regarding departmental reports?
Mayor, I do have a comment and a couple of questions on the Agr nature center for Fergus.
Yes.
The USDA Urban Agriculture Innovation Grant Program for a hundred thousand dollars. Do we know when that's going to be awarded?
Fergus?
Yeah. Good evening, trustee Pacheco. Can you hear me?
Yes.
And we believe that will be September when we hear back.
Great. And then a comment. I just wanted to commend you for the nice article that appeared in the Village Vision this past issue. It was great to understand the different varieties of the lavender plants. I think it probably opened a lot of the village residents' eyes at the immense amount of varieties of the lavender. I also wanted to ask a little bit on the water shortages. I know that the mayor had written and done, I believe, a live broadcast with regard to the water situation. Just curious if we know any more about that.
We do, trustee Pacheco. When I spoke to Mike Hammond, who's the executive engineer of the Middle Rio Grande Conservancy District, I wanted him to give me detailed information about when the watering would stop for fields throughout the village of Los Rancho's. And at that time, it was about two weeks ago. He thought there was a possibility that after the nineteenth of July, there would be no more watering. But he advised me that the water users in the valley, including MRGCD, the Water Utility Authority, had asked the Interstate Compact of the State Engineer Interstate Stream Commission to allow the use of stored water upstream in reservoirs to keep water in the river and water available for the ditches until the seventh of September. In last week's Albuquerque Journal, it was noticed, there was a headline article that said the compacts approved the use of stored water. So we should have water in the valley through Labor Day, September seventh. So that's where we are today.
Fantastic. That's what I was hoping we'd hear.
Yes, we have.
Thank you, mayor. And then I do just have one question on the commercial business registrations. I'm assuming this is Tiffany, if not Jennifer. Did we find out, did Wex permanently shut down on Fourth Street?
Tiffany, are you available?
Yes, trustees, mayor. That's a question I'm going to need to forward on to Jennifer. As far as I know, they, they have closed, or if they're not, they are not planning on renewing their lease. But I will confirm with Jennifer.
Thank you, Tiffany. And then one last question for Fred. Thank you for putting this, this great table together with graphs. I think it really shows us what's kind of going on. I do have a question, and this may be pretty obvious for some, but the suspicious P slash V. I don't know what P slash V stands for. Can you tell me what that?
I apologize for that on the abbreviations, but it's suspicious persons or vehicles. And, and you know, somebody calls in and says somebody's driving around suspicious or acting suspicious. That's what those are.
Thank you, Fred.
Any further questions regarding departmental reports?
I have one.
Go right ahead, trustee Lewis.
For either Administrator Simon or Maria Rinaldi. I just would like to ask for a little bit of update on Village Center project and how we're coming on that process.
Perhaps Maria should answer that question. Maria, are you on the line?
She should be.
I have her phone number. Three, seven, nine, eight, nine, eight, two.
Mayor, board of trustees, can you hear me?
Yes.
A quick update on Village Center project. Ann, Simon, and I are working with SB Friedman, our consultant, who is charged with helping us detail the terms of land transfer to the development Palindrom based on benchmarks and a schedule of development in accordance with an approved site plan. The intent is that we will have a draft development agreement for your review at the end of September, early October at the latest.
Does that answer your question, trustee Lewis?
Yep, just curious where we were.
Any further questions regarding the departmental reports?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Fred, a question for you. The four hundred and ninety-nine calls that you listed under Bernalio County, are these strictly Village Valley Command, or they are just the entire North Valley?
Fred, can you hear me? Did you hear?
Yes. I couldn't hear the question, though.
Okay, I'm asking a question regarding the four hundred and ninety-nine calls that you show for the, under the Bernalio County reports. Are these all in Valley, North Valley Command, or are they Bernalio County, North Valley?
Mayor and trustee Rayel, those are strictly within the village limits. Bernalio County years ago carved out the village limits and made it their own district, which is District Eight Thirty-two on their computer stuff. So that is, only reflects the calls within the village limits.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further questions regarding the departmental reports? If none, we're going to move to item eight, financial business. Discussion and approval of the cash report for June two thousand twenty, Treasurer Will Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Can you hear me, sir?
Yes.
Awesome. All right, before you, you have the cash report for the month ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Ending cash balance at June thirtieth, two thousand twenty is five million, one hundred seventy-eight thousand, two hundred eighty dollars and seventy-six cents, which is a decrease of forty-four thousand, four hundred eighty dollars and forty-seven cents. For this month, year-to-date deficiencies over revenues, deficiency of revenues over expenditures is four hundred thirty-one thousand, nine hundred twenty dollars and four cents. Ms. Tammy highlighted four items, although they're not unusual in nature because they're all part of ongoing capital projects that we discussed before. They are significant in dollar size, and those should be before you as well.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you, sir.
I need a motion to approve the cash report.
I move approval of the cash report.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion at this time about the cash report? Being none, I'm going to call for the question. I'm going to call for a roll call vote. Trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Thank you. Eight B is now discussion and approval of resolution number twenty twenty dash oh seven dash oh one, two thousand twenty final quarter financial report, year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
Good evening, mayor and trustees. This, if there's any questions on this form, I will stand for questions. This form is just sent up to the state to show them our ending cash balance, which can be seen in column eight. That number at the bottom, five million, one, seven, eight, two, eight, one, matches our June cash report.
Okay, Tammy, we do have a question from trustee Lewis. Trustee Lewis, go ahead.
I'm sorry, with all financial reports. I didn't realize this was part of it, and I just want to point out something before this cash report.
What page?
On page, it's seventy-one, or thirty-seven of thirty-seven, whichever pages people are using.
Thirty-seven.
The final summary. Yes, I believe that's it.
So you said seventy-one? Okay, I've got it right here. Yes, seventy-one.
So I know that you have all been working hard and make some changes to the cash report. On this report, under general fund and under revenues, it's still showing a variance of two hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred ninety-eight dollars. And I know that that was before you guys made some corrections. It just didn't get carried over to this report because that variance should be eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars based on your previous reports further up in the cash report. So I still enforce approving the cash report, but I think there's just an oversight of a change that got made that didn't carry over to this final page.
Tammy, did you hear that? Will Fisher, did you hear that? We're on page seventy-one. We're looking at the ending cash and cash equivalents.
For that, and trustee Lewis is correct. I'm sorry for that oversight. It did not carry forward from the front revenue page of it. It should be the eighty-one thousand, and Ann and I actually saw that late this afternoon, that it did not carry forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
That answers my question.
For some reason, we have, we have echo. I don't know what's going on. Okay, so we're going to move to item eight B. Tammy has already advised you that she'll be prepared to answer questions, so I need a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash oh seven dash oh one, the twenty twenty final quarter financial report, year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
I will make a motion to approve.
I need a second.
Second.
Do you have any discussion or questions for Tammy? Being none, I'm going to call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Thank you. We're now going to move to item C, discussion and approval of resolution number twenty twenty dash oh seven dash oh two, budget revisions for fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. On my, I have Tammy Silva. Ann, are you also prepared to discuss the budget?
Yes.
Do you want to make a, make a, any kind of presentation before I ask for a motion in a second? Because we are going to have discussion.
Mayor, this is Danielle. Item C is going to be the budget revisions for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, before we get into the next item, which will be budget approval.
Okay, we have already approved eight B. Okay, it's already been approved.
Correct. The next one would be item C, which is budget revisions.
I'm sorry, you are correct. Okay, item eight C, which is right here. I've got it. Okay, let's say this again. Item eight C is discussion and approval of resolution number twenty twenty dash oh seven dash oh two, budget revisions for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Tammy, are you available to talk about this?
So this is the bar resolution, which is the budget adjustment request that needs to go to the state. What, there are three lines for this. All three are related to the same thing. And what this is, is for our pass-through of our payments to Bernalio County for fire services. And we get money from the state. We then pay Bernalio County Fire to assist us. The amount that the state gave us this year was higher than we thought, so we did not have enough budget. It doesn't affect any of our own money, but to make sure we're in compliance, we have to increase our budget on these line items for the twenty-nine thousand, forty-nine dollars and forty cents.
Thank you, Tammy. Resolution number twenty twenty, oh seven dash. Need a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this particular item at this time? Being none, I'm going to call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Now we can move to item D. Discussion and approval of resolution number twenty twenty dash oh seven dash oh three, budget adoption for fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one. Administrator Simon.
Mayor and trustees, thanks very much for considering this budget tonight. We're really proud of how hard everybody worked to, to push us, really, to create a budget that was based on a projected twenty-five percent reduction in revenues, which was not very difficult, given that we've been operating with sort of belt-tightening mentality for the last three and a half months, and the staff has done a great job. I'm proud to present this budget with two point nine million dollars in anticipated revenue in our general fund, with budgeted expenditures of two point six million, which gives us about a three hundred, three hundred thousand dollar cushion. So we're not operating in a deficit, we're still under budget, and... We're still under budget and we've covered all of our needs that enable us to provide the services to the village residents that they deserve. I stand for questions.
I'm going to ask for a motion in a second first, and then we'll get to discussion. I need a motion to approve resolution number 2020 dash 07 dash 03.
I'll move to approve.
I need a second.
I'll second.
At this time, is there any discussion or questions for Administrator Simon? Being none, I'm going to call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for approving the budget.
Thank you.
Item nine, public hearings. Item nine A. SDP 20 dash 01, a request by David Montoya for final site development plan approval of a commercial site development plan for a redevelopment in the C1 zone in the Fourth Street corridor and character area. The property is located at 506 Ortega Road Northwest, 8831 Fourth Street Northwest and 8833 Fourth Street Northwest. 506 Ortega Road and 8831 Fourth Street are legally known as lots A and B, lands of Wendell Scarborough, Section 16 Township 11 North, Range 3 East, New Mexico Principal Meridian, as projected into the town of Alameda Grant, Bernalillo County, New Mexico, filed in the office of the Bernalillo County Clerk on November the 21st, 1984. 8833 Fourth Street is legally known as a certain tract of land, known and described as tract 193, as shown on map number 24 of the Middle Rio Grande Conservancy District, located within Section 16 Township 11 North, Range 3 East, New Mexico Principal Meridian, as projected into the Alameda Grant, Bernalillo County, New Mexico. The properties contain 0.3333, comma, 0.3636, comma, and 0.17 acres more or less. I need to announce the following. Those speaking will be conned upon and will be sworn in individually at their respective time. Ms. Winter, will you please swear in Ms. Justice?
Ms. Justice, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Ms. Justice, please present the request for the site development plan.
Yes, so Mayor, trustees, the applicant desires to develop an addition, an open side canopy, and a portal to an existing building at this property, these properties. The addition would be 1,661 square feet of enclosed space. The primary use of this building is going to be a combination of office space and commercial storage. And the property has been used as a contractor's yard in the past. Other buildings included in the site development plan are existing structures that will not alter their building footprints. One is an existing commercial building used for retail, and one is an existing residence, which is also used for retail, but which will become office space. The sketch plot review occurred administratively during the subdivision process. The applicant's in the process of subdividing this property to alter the lot lines. And the Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to three to recommend to forward a recommendation of approval of the site development plan. So the reason for this close vote was removal of originally condition number one, that the applicant must apply for a conditional use for construction yard and commercial storage facility. The conditional use must be obtained prior to approval of the final plat, or the use of the building must change and be noted in the final plat. So most of this discussion revolved around this one condition and determining whether or not the use of the construction yard was legally non-conforming, whether it had been discontinued. So it was confirmed that the legally non-conforming use had not been discontinued. So this condition was no longer necessary. And much of the supplemental documents provided by the applicant are in support of this use as a contractor's yard. So as for the site development plan criteria, the design of the addition appears to comply with our design regulations as Northern New Mexico style. The number of parking spaces and ADA accessible spaces is met, and most of the parking is existing. All of the ADA parking dimensions are met, and three of the 16 parking spaces have dimensions short by half a foot. Our requirement is nine by 20 feet for each space, and three of the spaces are noted as 8.5 by 20. So this, they're essentially compact. The parking space dimensions could be adjusted by cutting into the planters. However, that would take away from the landscaping requirements. Eight and a half feet is wide enough for a car to park. And landscaping is also met to the extent possible, given that there are other development constraints, such as the access and the parking. And most of this landscaping is existing. The grading and drainage plan has been reviewed by the village designated engineer, and the plan was corrected by the engineer. Drainage easement to allow for shared drainage between the future lots in this subdivision plat are noted, are going to be noted on the final subdivision plat. The light pole at the west end of the property, as well as all outdoor lighting, must comply with the dark skies ordinance. And you'll note in the plan set that there are some pages with clouds around some of the text or some of the drawings. And those are the changes that were made in the plans between the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and this one. So they've noted and corrected some of the conditions that the Planning and Zoning Commission had forwarded in their recommendation. So with that, the department recommends that the board of trustees approve the site development plan with the following conditions. There must be shared drainage between Lot A and Lot, Lot A1 and Lot B1 through a drainage easement on the filed subdivision plat. And this plat must be filed before the building permits are obtained. Any future signage must comply with the sign ordinance and sign permits must be obtained. Exterior lighting must comply with the dark skies ordinance. The site development plan must meet Bernalillo County Fire Department requirements. Construction shall meet all current village, county, and state codes. And the site development plan must be executed by the applicant with the findings that the proposed development meets the requirements of the C1 zone, and it meets the requirements for the site development plan, and is supported by the village master plan. And public notice requirements were met. And I stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Justice? Being none, we're going to move to the next item. Is there anyone participating wishing to speak on this matter? Mr. David Montoya, I believe you can speak at this time. Ms. Winter, will you please swear in Mr. Montoya? Are you there, Mr. Montoya? Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Winter will be swearing you in at this time. Ms. Winter?
Mr. Montoya, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Go ahead, David.
Well, if there's any questions, I'm, I'm here. I think Tiffany was very, you know, she was very clear and covered everything that I think we, I need to speak about. But I'm ready to answer any questions or concerns that anyone has.
Go ahead. If anyone has questions for Mr. Montoya, please ask them now.
Mayor, I do have a question.
Yes, trustee Pacheco.
Hi, Mr. Montoya. I just have a question. This is just really for, I guess, not any discussion, but the retail locations that you have on the site now, are those going to stay or are they going to go? I wasn't quite clear.
No, they're going to stay.
Okay, so it'll be retail plus your construction yard and with the new building as well?
Well, it's, it's really not a new building, but it's, it's an addition to our existing building that's in the back. But the existing Foundom Fourth, I mean, the, the antique shop will still, will still remain, and both buildings will remain as they are. So there's really no change. And there's an existing dwelling upstairs. None of that has changed.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions for Mr. Montoya? Okay, let me follow. Is there anyone else participating wishing to speak on this matter or speak in favor of this matter? If so, please identify yourself. If so, if, if someone wants to speak, Ms. Winter will have to swear them in.
Please raise your hand if you wish to speak.
Thank you. Is there anyone particip, go ahead. Okay, go ahead. Who's the first one?
Tiffany, are the participants you sent me, are those for favor or against?
So Pam Montoya and Eric Munn are also speaking on behalf of the applicant. They can speak with David at this time.
So Pam Montoya, are you there? Pam Montoya, are you there? Okay, who else? Okay. Pam Montoya, if you can unmute yourself, you'll be able to speak in favor. Okay, who is that?
Can you hear me? Yeah, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Winter needs to swear you in.
Ms. Montoya, can you please raise your right hand?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Pam.
Well, I would just like to say that everything on the property is basically going to remain the same. It's just that the, it's just going to better the existing building that's there. That's really all I had to say. There's, you know, not going to be really any, any other changes to the property as, as it is now. The Javier's Antique Shop will, will stay there. He has the, the house that he uses for his shop as well. So really, the construction that David is going to do, the, the renovation is just to better, to make that, that building look better and have an overhang to protect, you know, any equipment that is there, like his truck or, you know, anything like that.
Thank you, Pam. Does anyone have any questions for Pam Montoya? Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this matter?
Eric, are you there? Eric Munn, if you can unmute yourself.
Hello?
Is this Eric?
Yes, can you hear me?
Ms. Winter is going to swear you in.
Okay, great.
Mr. Munn, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you so much.
You may speak now.
Yes, I'm Eric Munn, and I'm the agent on this project and the architect. I concur with Tiffany's presentation of our condition and our conditions being met, and I'm happy that we're hopefully going forward on this project, because we do meet all the conditions. And so I'm in favor definitely of moving forward.
Thank you, Eric. Is there anyone else participating wishing to speak on this matter or speak in favor of this matter? Okay, now I'm going to move to the other item. Is there anyone participating who is opposed and would like to speak at this time? If so, you must identify yourself, and I will ask attorney Nan Winter to swear you in.
Yes, I have one person.
Who is it?
John Ross, James Ross.
James, are you on?
Mr. Ross, if you can unmute yourself.
Mr. Ross. James Ross, you, for you to be able to speak, you must unmute yourself. Okay. Ask him to raise his hand. James?
Hello?
Yes, James, attorney Nan Winter will swear you in at this time.
Mr. Ross, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Mr. Ross? Oh, he muted himself again.
I just got a note that he might be wanting to speak on the basis of agenda and not society.
Oh, then that's what it is. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ross. Is there anyone else wishing to participate who is opposed, who is opposed to this and would like to speak? Apparently not. I need a motion to approve.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve SDP 20 dash 01 with the suggested conditions by the planning and zoning director.
I need a second.
I second.
Is there any discussion by the governing body at this time? I'm going to call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Thank you. It's approved. Item 10 is old business. There is none. Item 11 is announcements. There are none. Item 12 is new business. 12A. Discussion and approval of ordinance number 271, declaring the Fourth Street Revitalization Project Corridor from Shulte Road North to Pueblo Solano Road a moratorium street, and proposing amendments to the Street Excavation Ordinance Regulating Moratorium Streets. Attorney Nan Winter.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. Please recall that on June 10th of 2020, you all approved resolution number 2020 dash 06 dash 01, declaring Fourth Street a moratorium street. A resolution is, is, it's just that, it's, it's a resolution adopting a policy to solidify the work that Maria Rinaldi and Tiffany put into this declaration. We really needed to amend the ordinance. What I amended was Chapter 10, Article 1, titled "Street Excavation." In your packet, you will see two things. You will see the ordinance amending substantially Section 8, creating a new Section 8 moratorium streets, and then some additional edits to, to adopt the city of Albuquerque's repaving requirements. To back up just a little bit, of course, you, you recognize the, the amount of effort and money that's gone into Fourth Street. Based on that effort, Ms. Rinaldi approached me and asked me if I would assist her in developing a resolution and ordinance that preserved your project and prohibited utilities and others from cutting into the pavement, cutting into the curb, cutting into any of your, your landscaping along that corridor. So you adopted that temporary policy back in June. What we're, what we have in front of you today is actually an ordinance amendment that makes this a permanent policy adopted by the village. So it's not specific to Fourth Street. So it's not specific to Fourth Street. It's specific to any street you want to declare to be a moratorium street. In addition to the ordinance in your packet, I also I noticed that Tiffany included my red line of the entire ordinance, and that's a a longer document. It includes your entire street excavation ordinance and shows my proposed edits based on conversations with Maria, based on conversations and review by Tiffany, and based on questions and and considerations and recommendations by the mayor. I think for purposes of proceeding this evening, the the red line document is probably more helpful to you all. You can see from page 1 of the red line document that we really added a new Section 8 called "moratorium streets." And in my my copy, that's showing up in blue. I'm not sure how it's showing up in your packet. In addition to creating this new creature called a moratorium street, I also went through the ordinance and made some cleanup, just some very basic cleanup to deal with restoration and restoration plans. I caught some typos. I caught some formatting issues. And before I get to what's actually in the moratorium street section, I also wanted to point out that at Ms. Rinaldi's suggestion and request, we amended Section 10.1-19, which is now Section 10.1.20, to require that any resurfacing should be accomplished in accordance with the then-current technical standards set forth by the City of Albuquerque, as those standards may change from time to time. So so really, the new the creation of new Section 8 and the new section and the edits to Section 10.1.20 are the are the vast majority of the edits. But again, you can see from the red line document that there was quite a bit of what I call knit cleanup, consistency cleanup, and some formatting issues. So to get to the meat of this, we added a definition for "moratorium streets," and that's a new definition in this code. It means any street in all parts of the public right-of-way comprising that street, including street, curb, gutter, shoulders, gravel-filled infiltration trenches, underground low-impact development reservoirs and conveyance systems, sidewalks, promenades, anything that's been newly constructed, repaved, resurfaced, or received major reconstruction by any person in the preceding five-year period. So that's that obviously captures Fourth Street. It captures anything else that you might probably majorly repave, resurface, or reconstruct in the next in in the coming years. Consistent with that new definition, we added a whole new section called 10.1.8 "moratorium streets." And without reading, you know, verbatim, the language of all that, it does, we added six new sections to that to 10.1.8. We we mandated that no permits will be issued in a moratorium street during the five-year period following acceptance by the village of right-of-way. The second thing we added in the moratorium street section is that if you are a requester, if you are Verizon, if you are Comcast, if you are P&amp;M, if you request an excavation permit in a moratorium street in that five-year term, you will be denied. So that's the second thing we we put in there. You will also be directed to reroute your proposed improvement to the nearest adjacent public right-of-way, not implicated by a moratorium street improvement. The third thing we added is that the mayor, in his or her discretion, with demonstrable good cause and after investigation, may grant a waiver to this five-year moratorium street and the request. The conditions are, however, to 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 get this moratorium or to get this waiver, you can only cut within the asphalt travel lane of the moratorium street and absolutely not within any curb, gutter, shoulder area, LID reservoir, gravel-filled infiltration system, sidewalk, promenade. In other words, we're telling them if if in the unusual circumstance, you're allowed to cut into a moratorium street, you can only do it in that part that's more easily repaired. Working with Maria on this, looking at the designs and the drawings that are on your website, it became pretty clear and in conversations with the mayor that the investment in Fourth Street is is predominantly in that shoulder area in the gravel-filled infiltration system and in that low-impact development reservoir. So you if you by any chance get this waiver from the mayor, you are not allowed to cut into anything but asphalt. Of course, the fourth provision we had in here is requiring a $20,000 bond. Currently, your excavation ordinance only requires a $5,000 bond. You know, this is a this is a this is a number that is a policy consideration on your part. It was it's, of course, four times your current your current requirement. It could be that you want to update this. It could be that you want this number to be different, higher, lower. But in running this past the mayor, Tiffany, and Maria, quadrupling your current requirement was seemed appropriate. The fifth thing such the new Section 8 does is that it it also dictates three requirements in the event you are granted excavation rights pursuant to a waiver or an emergency repair. You have to make you have to restore the street to the same condition it was immediately prior to the excavation. Any excavation within travel lanes will require full lane repavement and in no event patchwork. This was a specific request of the mayor and it's absolutely supported by the guidance on street cuts nationwide. Also, if you are going to be making a cut in a moratorium street in accordance with any waiver or emergency repair, it has to be in strict compliance with the existing roadway, drainage, grading, irrigation, landscape designs, and all relevant village codes. The last section we added in new section 10.1.8 is a fee. Regardless of any other fees, you will anyone that's making an excavation in a moratorium street in accordance with a waiver or an event of emergency repair will be subject to a $3.50 per square foot excavation fee if that cut is allowed in years 0 through 2. And if that cut is made two to five years out, the fee reduces to $3 per square foot of excavation. Those numbers were borrowed after reviewing multiple other moratorium streets ordinances and other jurisdictions. And just for the record, before I stand for questions, the moratorium streets concept is relatively new. It's been widely adopted in major municipalities. In our language, in this ordinance, mirrors to some extent that of Miami, Florida. So it's not an original thought on my part, but we did, of course, we we started with some draft language. Again, Maria, the mayor, Tiffany, all reviewed. We talked through some of these issues and and what you see in front of you now is the end result of multiple meetings between those parties and review of multiple other ordinances and other jurisdictions. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
We'll get to questions on Ms. Winter. Thank you. I'm going to ask for a motion in a second, then we'll get to discussion. I need a motion to approve.
I move approval. One second.
Any questions for attorney Nan Winter on this?
I have some.
Go ahead. Trustee Rayel.
Ms. Winter, on page 214 of 231, the the bond said at 20,000, which is, I think the ordinance you wrote is good. My feeling is that, like you mentioned before, that the 5,000 that we had required before is is not sufficient. And if we're going to leave it at 5,000, we should probably say 5,000 or a percentage of the of the cost of the project. And I think that that would be good. 5,000 is not going to pay for hardly anything is done on the street. Even 20,000, it may not be enough. And then also on on page 216 of 231, where it's referring, and I know you didn't change this, but in our ordinance, it says the applicant is encouraged to use the services of New Mexico One Call. New Mexico One Call is a requirement, a state requirement, state law. So I think we should change the wording here to say that that the applicant must use services of New Mexico One Call. And that's all I have. I just wonder what you think of these changes.
Ms. Winter?
Mayor, trustee Rayel, in going through the ordinance, I I probably would have made more changes, right? I, you know, my my I I do quite a bit of public works work, and I don't know how old this ordinance is. I don't know how long it's been on your books. But it it's probably due for a bit of a facelift. And, you know, that might be something that we could task, you know, in her spare time, Ms. Rinaldi with, or perhaps hire a separate consultant. But both of your suggestions are timely. They're appropriate. And maybe at some point in time, you want to consider somebody with excavation expertise to go through this and maybe update it a little bit. I didn't want to do that. I was really just tasked with finding a way to preserve your hard work in Fourth Street. And but I think your your amendments are appropriate. And again, I would suggest in the next year or so, you might want to take a look at this ordinance in its entirety.
Any other questions for Ms. Winter on this ordinance?
I just have one other thing.
All right, I have.
Everything here also referred to requiring the mayor's approval on everything. And I'm thinking that it could be the mayor's approval or someone, excuse me, or whoever the mayor designates as the person to approve these applications. I don't believe that the mayor should all be should be approving all applications for cuts or whatever.
Ms. Winter, do you have a comment on that?
Mayor, trustee Rayel. So when I put the mayor's ability to waive a cut in a moratorium street, I really was tracking the language that's already in this ordinance. So, I mean, starting out at 10.1.3 in an application for permit requirements, the way your ordinance is written, the application is actually made to the mayor for a permit require, you know, for a permit. It has to be approved and signed by him. If you go through this in the entirety of the ordinance, 10.1.4, "The mayor may issue such rules, standards, details, regulations as are required to enforce this article." This ordinance was already written, keeping in mind that the mayor is more or less the chief administrative officer of the village. So when I crafted 10.1.8, I kept it completely consistent with all the powers and duties of the mayor that are already in this docu that are already in your approved, your passed and final published ordinance. So I did not give him any more discretion in this moratorium streets section that he didn't already have in the balance of the ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Winter.
Thank you. I I just think, Mr. Mayor, that we should go through and like Ms. Winter suggested, we need to clean this up because there are some things that are really outdated.
Any other questions from Ms. Winter on this ordinance? I'm going to call for the question. I want to call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco?
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini?
Yes.
Thank you. We're now going to move to item B. Discussion and approval of resolution number 2020-0704, participation in local government road fund program administered by the New Mexico DOT. Ms. Rinaldi?
Mayor, board of trustees, good evening. On March 12 of this year, 2020, we submitted a proposal on behalf of the village with a letter of intent to request funding in fiscal year 2021 of the local government road fund for cooperative paving. Our project request was for a total project amount of $96,000 with the request of funding from the New Mexico Department of Transportation, and the amount is $72,000. And the village obligation for matching funds in the amount of 25% obligates us to $24,000. And the project scope was improvements along the following roads. Crack Seal and Stripe of El Pueblo Road from Rio Grande Boulevard to Second Street. Crack Seal and Stripe Osuna Chavez Road from Rio Grande Boulevard to Second Street. Crack Seal Garduno Road from Fourth Street to the Dead End. Stripe Ranchitos Road from Rio Grande Boulevard to the Village Limits. Stripe Los Rancho's Road from Guadalupe Trail to Village Limits. And Stripe Green Valley Road from Rio Grande Boulevard to Fourth Street. Upon adoption of the resolution this evening, I will submit the acceptance of these funds per the resolution, and the New Mexico Department of Transportation will issue a project agreement for the mayor's signature. And I stand for any questions.
I'll move I'll need a motion in a second before we get to questions and discussion. I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve resolution number 2020-07-04.
I need a second.
Second.
Are there any questions for Ms. Rinaldi?
I do have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Maria, just curious, and I I think somebody had answered my question prior to tonight with regard to these projects. If something else comes up that seems to be more pressing, in need of repair, can we change these projects to to reflect the priorities? Or are we, you know, kind of, are these do these have to be fulfilled?
Mayor, trustee Pacheco, this is the project scope that will be written in the agreement. And it's a very short period of time. I believe that we have nine months to complete this project. This is the first attempt at creating a capital improvement program for road improvements, an inventory of maintenance and improvement requirements of all roads within the village. And once we have that in place, in future requests for funding, we can refer to that document, and it gives us a lot more room to maneuver. At this point in time, because we didn't have a master paving plan or any sort of capital improvement roadway plan, I was required to submit roadway improvements with specific termini.
Thank you, Maria.
And these were certainly just one last point, I'm sorry. And these were the roads that were identified by staff as needing this attention in this in this period of time.
Thank you, Maria. Any other questions for Maria Rinaldi on this resolution? If not, I'm going to call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco?
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini?
Yes.
We move to item C. Pursuant to Section 3-1 NMSA 1978, the mayor shall submit for confirmation the names of persons who shall be employed by the municipality to the Board of Trustees for approval. CA is confirmation of Sabrina Apodaca, administrative assistant, Agranature Center, temp to full-time administrator and Simon.
Yes, Mayor, trustees, thank you for considering the hiring and bringing on full-time Sabrina Apodaca. As you may recall, back in, I believe it was March, you approved the transfer of some funds to hire her on as a temporary employee. We have had her on since about May, and she has been just an absolute asset to the village. She's really taking our agriculture program to a new level and providing a level of professionalism that is, you know, just making us all look good. She is really helpful to Fergus, who's our hard-working farm manager, and really to all of us. And I highly recommend your approval of us bringing her on as a volunteer. And I highly recommend your approval of us bringing her on as a full-time employee.
Thank you. Anne, I need a motion to approve.
I'm moved through.
I need a second.
Second.
Are there any questions or discussions of Administrator Simon? Being none, I'm going to call for the question, I'm going to call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco?
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E, topics for discussion only, assisted living facilities in residential areas, food trucks, and discerning between agriculture and agriculture commercial. Ms. Justice?
Mayor, Trustees, these items have come up in the past few months, and we would like some assistance and opinions related to these topics. I was hoping we could just kind of go down in their order, and each topic, I've presented a little bit of context and kind of a guiding question, but we don't necessarily have to follow that. Again, this is discussion, not necessarily resolution or policy at this point.
So, go ahead, Tiffany. I was going to ask you to talk about assisted living facilities in residential areas. I do have something to add to that. When I first became mayor, I was approached by the Beehive. The Beehive Homes, they wanted to put a Beehive Home facility on Rio Grande Boulevard. And I don't know if you discussed this with Tim McDonough or not, but do you remember some of the discussion at that time, Tiffany?
Mayor, I was not a part of that discussion. This is the first I heard of that, actually.
Well, it relates to this. Do you have any others that have approached the village to provide assisted living?
Yes. So how this has come about is there's a resident in the village who has family in assisted living facilities, and given the exorbitant cost of them, and kind of the style of facilities that is usually out there, was wondering if it was possible to have a home-scale operation, basically turn a house into an assisted living facility for four or five people, depending on the size of the bedrooms, with an onsite nurse. And basically, we don't allow this in our code right now. An assisted living facility is, and it is a business, the entire facility is a business. It wouldn't fit our definition of a home occupation, and it wouldn't meet the criteria of a hardship for variance, because they could technically do anything else with this property, though they don't have to do an assisted living facility. Another option that is available for somebody that wanted to do this is a special use permit. But we have three criteria for a special use permit. One, that it's not allowed in other zones. Two, that it's not detrimental to the neighborhood. And three, that it's in the master plan. The second and third point, it's really going to vary on where somebody would want to do this. But assisted living facilities are allowed in other zones. They're allowed in mixed-use zones like Village Center, Commercial, and Gateway District. So that isn't a use that isn't allowed elsewhere. And so the main topic for discussion is a small, is whether or not the concept of a small home-scale assisted living facility would be something that the village would consider allowing. I am not imagining necessarily a large-scale facility, but at the same time, that's, this is discussion, so we can discuss that one as well.
So let me ask the governing body, do you want to talk about some of these, perhaps briefly? Or do you want her to go through everything? And then, because there is a nice, there are four sheets in their packet that talk about this in some detail, and a lot of this is going to require some careful thought. How do you want to do this? Okay, let's move on to food trucks. Tiffany, tell us about the food truck situation and how this came about.
So food trucks, we've, we've gotten reports several times over the past year about food trucks parking in vacant lots along Fourth Street. We have some vacant lots on Fourth Street. And up until very recently, we did not have a food truck permit. We had a commercial business licenses, and we had one-day vendor permits. One-day vendor permits are twenty dollars, and it didn't really make financial sense for somebody who wanted to park some days a week at a parking lot to pay twenty dollars each day. So recently, we started permitting food trucks. They get a license in addition to the commercial business license, and we ask questions specific to them, such as where is your commissary, where are your possible locations? And it's, it basically allows for a food truck to park in the village at multiple designated locations, as long as they have a commissary and the property owner's permission. One thing, so this permit is for parking in commercial zones. Since it's a commercial operation, it still isn't something that would be allowed in a residential zone. And so the two main questions are whether somebody could park a food truck in a residential area, if that's something that the village want to permit, and would the village want to permit a food truck or food trucks parked at Hartnett Park? One thing to distinguish between Edgewood Park and Hartnett Park is that Edgewood Park's underlying zoning is Village Center, so it is commercial. So a food truck could park at Edgewood Park, but the underlying zoning of Hartnett Park is A1, which is residential. So a commercial business could not be there on a daily basis. One thing I will point out, though, is that food trucks at the Growers Market are part of a seasonal event, similar to food trucks at other events, like Lavender in the Village. These are special events that get special permits. What we're discussing is something that would be more on a daily basis. And I can move on to the next item, or we can discuss.
Move on, Tiffany, and then we'll let the trustees decide if they want to chat about this or not. Go ahead, Tiffany.
Okay. So the next one, there's multiple parts to this. It's distinguishing between agriculture and agricultural commercial. So we have residential agricultural zoning, and we have commercial agricultural zoning. There, there are some similarities and differences between these, between these zoning distinctions. Currently, there's only one property in the village that is zoned agricultural commercial, and that's Casa Rodenya Winery. And there's, there's language in the A1 code, which is agricultural residential, that seems to have language that is similar but different than the AC zone. And basically, the AC zone allows everything that's in the A1 zone, plus some other things specifically. But one confusing language is that in the A1 zone, what is allowed is display and sale of agricultural products, including animals raised on the premises and products incidental to the sales activity. And in the AC zone, something that is identified as separate from this is commercial activities associated directly and exclusively with horticulture, equestrian activities, and general agricultural activities, including but not limiting to, limited to the raising and selling of vegetables, fruits, crops, and livestock, as well as the care, feeding, training, and boarding of livestock. So there seems to be some overlap between those definitions. But where exactly that distinction is, is up to interpretation at this point. Another point of discussion is agriculture and processing. Processing is defined as something that is different than what is allowed as an accessory use under agriculture. Agriculture, in our definition, notes that packing, treating, and storing is allowed as part of agriculture, but that is distinguished as different from processing. And I guess the main question there is what, what is the difference between processing and packing, treating, or storing? And then the third item is something separate. It's the Growers Market and the Arts Market. So the Growers Market is a longstanding seasonal event that takes place Saturdays at Hartnett Park. It's separate from the Arts and Crafts Market, which also takes place Saturdays at Hartnett Park. The Growers Market has acted both independently and as an extension of the village. There is a tab for the Growers Market on our website, article and ad in our magazine, and a sign in front of Village Hall. And there's also no agreements in place between the village and the Growers Market. But the creation of the Agriculture Committee back in two thousand notes that one of the duties of that committee was to sponsor the Growers Market. And so it's been quite a few years since the year two thousand. And at this point, I guess the main question is how, where do we stand with the Growers Market, especially in relation to the Agriculture Committee, especially how the Agriculture Committee has changed over the years? It is, it was technically a committee that was created by the village to support the two thousand and ten master plan, and there haven't been any updates since to support the two thousand and twenty master plan or the two thousand and thirty-five master plan. And so there's a few questions specific to the Growers Market. How would the board like to move forward? Should the Agriculture Committee continue to sponsor the Growers Market? And what does that sponsorship mean?
So Tiffany, thank you very much. I do notice that these pages in our packet are very comprehensive, and they provide quite a bit of information. And I think the trustees can, can take a look at this very carefully and perhaps provide, you know, suggested ideas or other discussion relating to the questions that we're asking. This is stuff that's all of a sudden popped up, really, over the last year or so, and some of it's almost coming to a head. The Growers Market, we are even getting IPRA requests about the Growers Market. So it's, this question has kind of been around for a while. Do the trustees want to move on, or do you want to just say a few things about any of this?
I'd like to say a few things.
Go ahead, Trustee Lewis.
I think this is interesting in that they're very different things that are put before us here. And I'm not really sure what we're looking for as far as suggestions from the trustees.
I think guidance.
A process.
I think guidance.
Guidance. As to a process, how to address it?
Either that.
Or thoughts on that particular subject?
I think thoughts.
Thoughts.
For sure.
Is that, is that what you, you're looking for, Tiffany?
Mayor, Trustees, if I could jump in, these issues that Tiffany has presented are ones that are coming up often here at Village Hall, and staff is having to address these issues. And, and at this point in time, we're not looking for any policy, per se. We are just interested in your thoughts on these matters. The agriculture commercial in particular is right upon us, and again, just looking for a little guidance.
Does that answer your question, Trustee Lewis?
It sort of does. I mean, to give them some guidance in that, well, we should address it this way.
Perhaps.
I mean, that, that can be a little dangerous. If you get one trustee saying, here, this is how I think we should do it, and if there's no other comments, then it's sort of taken as a gospel, or is it a suggestion? I mean, I'm just, I'm not sure how to move forward with these without, I don't know.
I suggest that we give it some thought, and I will ask Tiffany and Anne to maybe even expound on some of this. It would be great if the trustees have questions about how we got here or why we got here that's not explained in this particular packet. This is an evolving, it's evolving. Let's just put it that way.
I was wondering if you could possibly, you know, get two trustees together at a time to just have a general discussion about these issues?
Not a bad idea.
You know, versus just saying, well, here's an issue, here's some background, what's your thoughts?
Yes.
I actually like that. I would, I would prefer more general discussion.
Okay.
With, you know, Administrator Simon and Tiffany.
Tiffany, okay.
And just a more in-depth discussion about how we got here.
Absolutely.
And what, they're coming up a lot, in what way are they coming up a lot? And so that would be my suggestion at this time.
That's a great idea.
Mayor, Trustees, I can see how, how this is, you know, these are changing times, and they're changing very rapidly. And I can see how, how there's, there's push in every one of these areas.
Right.
To figure out what's up, you know, in the agricultural, we want to encourage agriculture, but yet, how are you going to encourage agriculture in small plots if they're not processing?
And all that.
And all that kind of stuff, and also moving, moving product commercially off their property at the same time.
That's true.
And so how do we start breaking that up?
Exactly.
And how do we start designating? And so I certainly have some thoughts and ideas as we were going through and listening to Ms. Justice. The food trucks is another one. I mean, there's no place to eat right now. And so, you know, these food trucks are, that's an interesting concept, but yet, to have them roaming our streets like an ice cream truck, I haven't seen an ice cream truck in years, though, so.
They used to be in the village. They used to be in the village. I'm telling you right now, they used to run up my street.
Sure, sure, you know, and so, and then the senior facilities, we know that we need places for our seniors.
Right.
But, you know, we've got a, an ordinance in place that, that, about rentals and, and in residential areas. And so these are, these are tough, tough things to talk about and to make a final decision on without really good thorough thought. And so I appreciate it, even having the opportunity to be able to see.
Yes.
Kind of how this, this needle's going back and forth. And so I don't think we should move fast on any of these, okay? And, and take our time, and let's go ahead and, and understand what kind of decisions we're making.
Thank you, Trustee Ricabini. Anybody else?
Yes. I agree, we need to have discussion in all this, every one of these. But for right now, one thing that's concerning to me is the agricultural commercial and things that you can, that I can see happening if we don't do something pretty soon, and that's these large greenhouses that can be used for growing marijuana. We don't have any.
Yes.
I mean, if we allow agriculture, is that part of what we want to allow? And I know that the large greenhouses will be used for that, or can be used, and they could eventually just be all over the village in the open space that we do have. So it's something that we really need to look at, and I, I think that we need to address perhaps the size, because right now, they can put any size greenhouse, if they have a property, agricultural land. And we need to address whether we need to set up a size, a maximum size for a greenhouse. I know there's been a couple of people that have already said they're concerned. Someone mentioned that they would hate to see the Agranature Center area, that property with, full of large greenhouses. And there's some already going up. So there is a big concern on my part, and I'm sure that everybody else has their own concerns about the different issues here. And I am, for one, do not like the idea of having food trucks on residential areas. I think that we need to keep it with, that Fourth Street is commercial, we should keep it that way.
Thank you, Trustee Rayel. Any other comments? Being none, we're going to move to item thirteen, trustee informal discussion. A roundtable discussion is informal. The Board of Trustees will take no official vote or other official action. Trustee Rayel?
I just have one, one thing. I'm wondering whether, I know there's been several people brought up concerns on Caia de Pajarito, about the things that are happening there that resident, or most of the people there are not happy with. So is something being done by staff to address these?
I'm not sure I can answer that question. Administrator Simon, would you like to try to answer that question? This has come up over the last couple of years, anyway.
Sure thing. Mayor and Trustee Rayel, thank you so much for the question. These are some really hard issues. We've had lots of them. There are issues of ponding, grading and drainage issues on Caia de Pajarito. We've had issues of people operating. We've had issues of people operating businesses without the proper licensure. Anyway, several issues. And so we're trying to take them one by one. On the grading and drainage, we have factored in some funding in the budget to address, at least on our end, some of the drainage that occurs at the bend of that road through simple means such as French drains. On, most of the runoff, however, happens on private property. So it's about working with those business owners whose stormwater is not being taken care of on the property site, and it's running into the road. On, on the business, home occupation side, our planning and zoning team have been reviewing the businesses that are in operation there and sending letters to those who haven't renewed and just following up with, with people who, who have renewed and to assure that they're operating, you know, within our means. There are a few other issues, but, but we have a long list, and we're, we're working our way through it.
Thank you, Administrator Simon. Anything else?
Thank you. No, that's all I have.
Trustee Lewis.
Wanted to start off by saying this has been a very trying and exasperating year, as well as a time of change. And I want to, I want to challenge all of us to step back and really think about what our village residents, what are their expectations of us? I think in these times of uncertainty, I think they look for us for a certain amount of stability. I think they look, I applaud the village staff for their budget. I think fiscal responsibility. I think we have a certain obligation to protect their way of life. And I think we have a certain obligation to move the village forward. I think this final issue that has been brought on the, on the agenda with these different issues. I think what Pablo just brought up on greenhouses. Another example, it's been almost a year ago that we sat in here for a meeting on short-term rentals. And we said, okay, we're going to take this under advisement, and we'll get back to you. And granted, a lot of that has to do with COVID. But I, I really think times are changing, just like we are doing this meeting like we are. I think we have to come up with a better way to operate as trustees in that quite possibly. I don't know how we do it within the requirements, but I think we need to start, as we have these informal discussions, I think we need to start some process for addressing them. And whether it's once a month after our meetings, we're getting together with staff, a couple of us at a time, or however we do it. And we pick two or three issues. I mean, we really need to get short-term rentals put on the, put out here. You know, we've talked about it for a year. We've told people we'd get back to them in January, February. We're not there. We have a tremendous exposure as to what people expect of us with greenhouses and the growing of marijuana and the production. Safety, you know, we've addressed safety in a lot of ways. But I think, again, really sitting down and taking all these different issues, some of these ones that pop up, assisted living, et cetera, these are great examples. We, we need to do something better than just having an informal discussion. I think the turmoil is over, and we're learning how to operate in this world. And now we need to figure out how we, as a governing body, are going to move forward to operate in this world and to address specific issues outside of just what's on our agenda. So that's, that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Lewis. Trustee Pacheco.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just can I respond to Trustee Lewis before? Yes, so I really appreciate your comments, Trustee Lewis. And one of the changes that we're going to be making is with the Village Vision. And we have been hearing that a lot of people read that magazine. And, but they might not necessarily read the minutes to, to every trustee meeting. So I feel like there's an opportunity to create a trustee corner in the magazine that gives you a voice and allows you to, to talk directly to the residents. And we really look forward to, to creating that with you in the next month.
Thank you very much, Anne. Trustee Pacheco, it's your turn.
Thanks for that reminder. And I know that there's also a deadline to that. So maybe if we could be reminded so that we can get our feedback to Jennifer, that'd be great. I just wanted to comment a little bit about the master plan. You all know that I was on the master plan committee. And I want to say that probably the, the, the most attended of the public meetings was around housing. And I know that Trustee Lewis brought this up last meeting with regard to how are we moving forward with the housing in the village? And I truly feel that now is the time for us to start thinking. Before we know it, years are going to pass, and we're, we're not going to be any further ahead in some of the things that we discussed during the master plan meetings. I would like to challenge all of us as well to start to think creatively about what we're going to do in this village for housing and how we're going to do it. What are the developments that are being proposed going to look like? What's going to be best for the residents? And, and again, taking in all the comments that we heard from the residents and the businesses and the teachers and everybody that came to those meetings. This is, it's important. I mean, our, our schools are, are going to suffer because we don't have a lot of young people in the village. We've got to look for alternatives to getting people back here, keeping who we have here, here. And, and them being able to, if they can't take care of their properties, maybe move to, to a place where they're more comfortable so that we can get new people in. But I would like us to all challenge each other to start working toward that. And, and like I said, you know, before, we, we know it, years pass, and we're no further ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Pacheco. Trustee Rieckabini.
Thank you, Mayor. Trustees. I, I, I agree with each of your thoughts on, on this. I mean, it is that times are changing very quickly. I, I remember back in, in October, November, December, and we were starting to talk about fiscal responsibility, and we were really getting on, on understanding how we were spending our money. And who would have ever known that we would have hit a situation where, where we really had to really work on it? And I really commend the mayor and staff, Ms. Simon, and, and the, every single department head for the way that they tighten their belts through this thing. It's been nothing short of phenomenal. This has been the best year, finish year, and the, the, the most complete next-year budget that I've seen and, and how the process came together. Just kudos out to the whole, to the whole bunch that you got here, Mayor. They really done a good job. I really want to follow along Trustee Lewis's comment about being able to have an exchange with staff and maybe two of us at a time. I don't know what the rules are or such. But there is a, really a need for us to get creative in these things. And when you exchange with, with, they've got boots on the ground, so to speak, staff every day, and we don't. But there is, being able to exchange ideas freely like that is really paramount. We might spend three hours or two hours just discussing one of these topics, and you're not going to get it done at one of these meetings efficiently. It's not going to happen.
That's true.
So, so I think that that is really important for us to go ahead and get scheduled, understand how to do it, and then make sure it gets done. To Ms. Pacheco's point, you know, now we've got through it. We've got a brand-new budget. And it's time for us to go ahead and start putting, knocking some of these pegs down.
I agree.
And so let's, let's work, work toward that direction. And I'm, I'm excited for this. I'm going to call it a new year, even though it's not a new year. Well, this is our new fiscal year.
It is.
But it's a, it's a, it's a brand-new awakening.
Oh, yeah.
Albeit, along with the COVID environment that we're in, which has changed our world completely. So let's, let's buckle up and, and get after it. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Rieckabini. What I will add to all of this is that our staff is functioning at an extremely high level. I have been around Village for 28 years as an elected official. And I have to tell you that the staff is functioning at a level that I've never really seen before. They're, they're, they're tops. When you read these departmental reports, you understand, you know, how passionate they are about what they do, how well they're doing their job. And we've got some exceptional employees in the village, and they're, they're making us look very, very good. The challenges are there. This is a new, a new normal. And I have a feeling it's going to be like this for a while. And even when it gets back to a more normalized situation, the challenges are not going to go away at all. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and request a motion to adjourn the meeting.
May I move to approve, to adjourn rather?
The time is 8:45 PM. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Do not forget to sign the resolutions, please, before you walk out the door. Thank you.